Good evening. I would like to call this Planning Commission meeting of July 10th, 2017, to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Eric Alderetti. Phil Becerra.
Here.
Cynthia Contreras-Lio.
Here.
Mark McLaughlin.
Here.
Beatrice Mendoza.
Here.
Kenneth Nguyen.
Here.
Lynette Verino. Mr. Vice Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, infinite and just as far.
We'll move on to public comments. Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? You may fill out a request and speak in front of the -- speak from -- request form to speak from the Secretary, and after introduction have three minutes to speak unless an extension of time is granted by the Vice Chair. Seeing none, we will move on. Consent calendar. The first item of the business is the consent calendar. Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on these items? Do you have a motion -- do we have a motion to approve on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Aye, second.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All as opposed? Okay. Moving on. Excused absence for Eric Alderetti and Lynette Verino. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Business calendar. Please be advised that the action of the Planning Commission is final following consent of the City Council unless, if allowed by the City of San -- on the City of Santa Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the City Council is filled with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the Planning Department within 10 days of the date of the commission's actions. Or unless set forth public hearing by the City Council, an appeal from a decision or requirement of the Planning Commission may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. With that, I would like to at this time consider Item 1, Site Plan Review Number 2017-05 to allow exterior modifications to a residential fourplex located at 580 Washington Avenue. Mellie McCann will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. So tonight we're looking at Site Plan Review 2017-5, and it's at 508 East Washington. As was mentioned, it is -- it's exterior modifications and it's to residential structures at the address described. So the project location is in SD-19 Historic French Park Specific Development, and you can see it kind of outlined in the dash blue. It's surrounded by single-family residence, multifamily residence, and a care facility to the south and the east. The -- this is just some images that were originally, you could see, a few months back. It's a 1947 what we'll call minimalist tradition, traditional, and there's two units in the front, as you can see on the side site plan, and two units in the back that are above tuck-under parking. So it's hard to see the picture image below, but I'll just describe that those are multi-pain windows, hung windows on either side, and a fixed window in the middle, what we'd call tripartite windows. Just to give a little bit of background, in March 20th, there's a code-enforced file request to stop work for work done without permits, and then shortly thereafter, the applicant obtained a re-roof and interior drywall permit. When it was discovered that there were other outstanding items and work ongoing without permits, that particular permit was voided. After that, the applicant submitted a French Park Neighborhood Review application in May, and then the conversation with -- through the French Park Neighborhood Review began, and typically the Architecture Review Committee takes a couple of weeks to review it, and at the same time staff reviews it, and that process went May-June, and then we've evolved to where we are here in July. And the reason that we're here is because they -- if the project was like-to-like, if they were going from wood windows to replacement wood windows, or stuccoing at like-to-like, it would typically not come before Planning Commission, but because they're changing the materials to not meet the Secretary of Interior standards, that's why it's before you tonight. So just to describe the proposed changes, in context of the windows, the operation is essentially the same. They're still hung windows and fixed windows. The material change is from wood to vinyl, and it's kind of the dark vinyl. The applicant has refined their proposal, so they are proposing to go back and include wood trim and sill on all windows and enhance the front elevation to better represent the wood trim that was there originally. Just as some other notes, the lights on the street elevation, as I mentioned before, they have multiple muntens and multiple lights that were divided, and what's proposed now is that they be single-pane without the divides in the windows. And then originally, the glass on the windows was clear, and it's actually a bit tinted now. Moving on to the stucco, the -- what was there before for the 1947 was more of a sand finish, and it's now proposed to be a smooth finish. On the upper right, the doors, for the residents, in the past it would have been more of a solid wood door with minimal lights or window opening -- windows. And on the street elevation, it's proposed to not reintroduce those extra lights, but keep it simplified, and I'm sorry, it's proposed on the front elevation to have one big glass pane for the front door, and then the other doors to be multi-pain. There'll be an image that you can see that shortly. And the garage doors that are in the back, they originally would have been of wood, and it's proposed that they transition to a roll-up metal garage door with kind of a faux finish, but that would be metal. And the last improvement is the stairway that leads in the back units from up to the units above the garage, and it's asked that that be replaced wood steps to like with metal railing and some minimal accessibility upgrades on the railing. So this is a visual of what's proposed, and so the -- on the upper left, you can sort of see the multi-pain windows that are there. Those are proposed to be taken out and have one pane of glass, the applicant's intention to try and simplify it more, but those same doors would be around the back on the other entrances to the residences. And then you can see the bottom right is the back units, that there's the vinyl windows that presently do not have any wood trim, and it is proposed that they do introduce some trim. So the overall analysis for the project is that, as mentioned earlier, it -- the French Park Design Guidelines and Secretary of Interior Standards apply to all projects that are in the SD-19 zoning district, and the two of those guidelines are highlighted here. It states that for deteriorated historic features, such as windows, that they shall be repaired whenever possible instead of replaced, but if in fact if they need to be replaced because they're so deteriorated, that the new architectural features should be such that they match in design, color, texture, and materials. So in this case, they don't do that. And then just to highlight again, the French Park Architecture Review Committee has seen the project, and there are actually two versions of their comments to you. The one that was in your -- as an exhibit was their original comments, and then the applicant made a few adjustments, and so the one that's attached in the very back of your staff report is their most recent comment. But in either case, they're not supportive of the exterior improvements. So based on staff's analysis and what's listed in the guidelines, we recommend that you adopt a resolution that denies Site Plan Review 2017-5. Happy to address any questions?
Thank you. Before we go on, I'd like to -- I missed one item, I apologize, but do any of the Commissioners at this point in time have anything to disclose with regards to this particular item, number one? Commissioner Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I communicated with the applicant, Mr. Bustamante, this previous Friday, met him on the site, and I spoke with Debbie McEwen from Historic French Park Saturday.
Okay, and I too talked with Debbie McEwen on Friday of this past week and met with the -- met with the -- submitted the person submitting for this on today at the site. So that's the disclosures. Okay, with that said, are there any -- do the Commissioners have any questions of staff?
Oh, may I add two more things? I'm sorry. One thing is you did, I think, get also the letter of support from the care facility. I think all of you got a copy of that.
I have a copy. Right, and I noticed one other thing that I didn't notice, sorry about that, but there was also a letter that was sent out last week from the Santa Ana Historic Society.
I think that's the one that I was trying to reference, that the one that was sent after the fact was actually from French Park Architecture Review Committee. So you got two correspondences. I don't know if there was something from the -- I'm not privy to what might have been from the historic folks. I have not seen that. So my guess is what you saw, what you got late, was the second round of French Park Architecture Review Committee. And I failed to mention as well that the applicant would like to take his three minutes and provide some information on the project.
Which is fine, we'll acknowledge that, but any questions?
I have a question, yeah. So I have a couple. So just so we're all operating with the same facts, so the property that we're looking at today, the 508 East Washington, that property, is it identified on any city, state, or national historic registers?
It's not in -- within the French Park historic -- federal historic register, no.
But it's also not individually identified, such as like, for instance, 506 East Washington?
It's not on -- yes, it's not on a local or a federal historic register.
Okay, but it is within the boundaries of SD-19, so it's subject to all the SD-19 plans and provisions for French Park's district?
Correct.
Okay. And then in your presentation, you had mentioned that work had been stopped, a stop-work order had been issued by code enforcement at the beginning of your timeline. So I guess was work just being done without any permits, and then code enforcement came out, or were there permits that were issued and then code enforcement came out because of the way they were issued?
It's my understanding that work was being done without permits. Extensive work was being done without permits. They put a stop-work on it.
Okay.
And then work -- yeah, and then the work continued, and then that's when, at some point, the Building Department was made aware of that to counter people, and so they voided the permit for just the roof.
Right.
Because we don't typically issue permits for projects that are in a violation mode.
Well, to me, the -- how building operates on this is a little bit of a separate issue that I'll discuss later, just because it just seems like roof, last I checked, is an exterior feature. So the building counters should already be attuned to knowing that if a project's in French Park, that they should be coming to planning staff for some sort of review or sign up.
I can clarify that. So the roof, re-roofs always come to planning staff. For re-roofs, it's the one item, the minor item, that does not need to go to French Park for architecture review.
Okay.
So for the last several years, if it's a like-to-like re-roof, then it can pass through by counterstaff. So that's why this one was given a permit.
So then, so just to make clear, so then this work -- this stop-work order was issued before a roof permit was issued? So there is no permits issued whatsoever, stop-work order was issued, and then the applicant went and got a roof permit and all the other permits?
Right, and when I looked at the records today, it's a little bit interesting. It looks like the applicant came in in early March to apply to Planning Department for the re-roof, but didn't actually get issued the permit until March later.
So then when was the -- when was the stop-work order issued?
March 20th.
March 20th, so then the roof permit was not issued until after March 20th?
Till the 21st, right.
So he applied for it before March 20th?
Well, what happens is people come to the planning counter and they say, "Can I do this?" And we might stamp it off and say, "Yes, you can do that," but they might never make it to the next counter over, which is the Building Department that issues the permit. And until they have the Building Department permit, they don't have a building permit.
Correct. So in other words, a valid permit to do any work on a roof was not issued by the city prior to the stop-work order?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay, and then, let's see, my other questions were pretty much -- oh, and this is something, Melanie, you and I started to talk about a little earlier. So in reading the SD-19 plan, unless I'm missing a page, maybe someone didn't send me something, but from my understanding, it says that it goes to a review, the French Park Committee, and then it comes to the Planning Commission. There's no deviation between minor, major, intermediate, in-between, up or down. It's just if you're doing work on the exterior, here is this process that it goes through. Today's staff had sent me a diagram that says, you know, if it's an odd-numbered day, it goes this way, if it's an even-numbered day, it goes that way, if it's minor versus major, and that's fine, but when I'm reading the SD-19 plan that's on the website, that was adopted by council, that's available to the public, I don't see anything about deviating between minor and major. So is there another part of the code or somewhere that that's included?
That has been a practice that's been implemented for at least the last 10, 15 years.
Is it council-adopted practice, or is this just planning staff-adopted?
It's a practice of if it's like-to-like.
No, no, but who adopted this? Was it planning staff, or was it the council?
There's not an adopted -- that I'm aware of.
So this is planning staff then? I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to get too far into the weeds, I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
Because I'm trying to read this stuff, and I'm going -- it's already confusing enough with the timelines and hearing different sides of stories. So I'm not trying to pick at anyone particularly, but it is a little frustrating when you're trying to, you know, for me, to look at it and see, okay, well, what is the correct process? Come to find out that you have to call staff to find out that there's a little more to the process than what's presented on the public website. And that's a little bit of my source of my frustration.
So I guess in our -- which, without getting into too much detail, this is, I think, the handout that Commissioners referring to, and it tries to assist the public to facilitate review such that if you're just changing out a window, wood window to a wood window, we wouldn't bring it before Planning Commission.
Even though the SD-19 does say if it's an exterior modification, it goes to the French Park Review Committee. I didn't see anything in the SD-19.
Yeah, it does go -- all of that does go through the French Park Review Committee. Any minor modification, any modification to the exterior, even a fence, goes through the French Park Architecture Review Committee.
I mean, we shouldn't get caught up on this. I mean, let's just, I guess, get back to focusing on this project. So those are my questions at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Beatrice?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I just wanted to know if there have been any recent exterior repairs or modifications close to this property in the recent years? I mean, I --
There's been a couple. There's one across the street that's a single-family house, and it had some fences, it had a fence put up, and that was, I don't know, maybe two, three years ago. Then further west on Washington, there are two larger homes that you've probably noticed over the last year had significant exterior modifications to them, but they were like-to-like, if you will. They were wood windows, replaced with wood windows. There were exterior stairs that were being repaired and made safer, and the site kind of upgraded, if you will. But all of those we would consider like-to-like, and they all went through -- well, that one was -- the process is that all those types of projects would go through French Park Neighborhood Review. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Melanie.
You're welcome.
At this point in time, would the applicant like to comment on this item?
Melanie, if you could keep that one up. If it's not correct, I apologize. There was permits pulled on March 3rd, and you guys have -- I'll pass on the copies of these.
So let me --
I pulled -- into the city webpage, it's on the city webpage, we pulled plumbing and electrical permit on March 3rd.
So then, so let -- we'll just get our semantics straightened. When I'm describing it, I'm describing building permits. So without getting too techie, building permits are for structural things, like windows and that sort of thing, and the plumbing and electrical, I wasn't referring to those at all. Those were the third. So those are interior things that don't affect the exterior, therefore they weren't part of my presentation.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, so just since we got both of you up here, let's just clarify right now. We're talking about a permit issued. I don't care when you applied, I don't care what you pulled, when you got it in your hands, whether the city kisses it, stamps it, seals it, whatever they do, what was the date of the roofing permit issued?
That one was on the 21st, I believe.
Of March?
Yeah, my contractor is here, LSR.
No, but so March 21st?
Yes.
And then when was the stop-work order?
On the 20th, which doesn't make sense to me, because if there's a stop-work, they won't issue permits. I mean, I'm listening.
That's why they --
They don't, right?
Yeah, that's why they canceled it.
I'm sorry, Melanie, what was that?
That's why they ended up canceling it the next day, because --
It was given in error.
Yeah.
So the roof permit was given in error?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Which kind of confused me, because I at least was -- the licensed contractor, he's done 50 projects in Santa Ana, went in good faith, went and pulled permits. I realized we didn't have the correct ones, but I just wanted the Commission to know that in the city, you know, we weren't trying to, you know, pull a fast one or anything. We went in good faith to the city. I know it's not historic. The house isn't historic, and, you know, and I know that historic structure basically has different -- like, the one, we bought 506 as well. That one is historic. The guy started, I said, "Don't touch it. Don't touch the windows. Don't do anything, because we have to go through this process." And in fact, I think it's coming before you guys, hopefully in two weeks, hopefully. We're going to add a new garage to match the existing house. But given that this one is not historic, if I could, yeah, if I could show --
Let me interrupt here for one second and just say that I think what we have to look at is that when it comes to historic, the discussion that we're having is relative to the exterior of the property. And the fact that we had, the fact that there was a plumbing and an electrical permit released, for the most part, I have to assume that's an interior permit that's being released at this point in time. So I think, for the sake of discussion, the permits that are clearly the ones that we need to be talking about are the finish of the building, the windows, the doors.
Yes.
Those are the ones that we're addressing or trying to address at this point in time.
Okay. First of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the ability to speak. Members of the Commission?
Would you introduce yourselves?
Carlos Bustamante, representing Urban Living Properties LLC.
Thank you.
And Urban Living is a company that was started to try and repair all these blighted properties that nobody can buy and nobody can finance. Perfect example is 508. There's no way anybody would finance this, because it was just such an horrid repair. The -- if you -- I have the photographs, but I'm going to show the photos up top here. There were people living in garages, and there was, I have to point out a couple of errors in the staff report. On page 1-2, she mentions that it had sand finish. It did not have sand finish. It has skip trowel, which is that really thick Spanish-style, I guess. It's called skip troweling, right? None of the building had its original smooth sand finish. It's all skip trowel. So we -- it said existing, and it wasn't existing. This is a whole, this is how people were living. This was exposed plumbing in one of the showers. They had covered it with a piece of plastic, which got water and rot all up and down the wall. All that had to be torn out. This is very dark, but you guys have a picture of it. The staircase says that it had railing. It didn't have any railing. We're going to put railing in, but that was rotten. We, I basically had to put a piece of plywood over it, so nobody would climb up, because it was very, very dangerous. And you can see the stucco detail there. It's a really rough stucco. Here's an actual picture of the city website, showing that we pulled permits on March 3rd. You guys should have that, and I think it's the first page in your packet. Again, I'm not arguing with the city, yes, they're not the appropriate permits, but just to show good faith that we did go and pull permits, or actually, my contractor did, and went and pulled permits. This is the condition they left the house, the property in. I mean, it was horrible. It was just completely, the windows were broken out. You can see a really, that's a really good picture of the skip troweling. So none of the property had smooth stucco on it or sand finish. I know the report says that it had sand finish, but it really didn't. Now, a lot of that stucco was falling off, because it wasn't applied correctly, and then given so many coats over the years, I think it had probably five or six remodels. They were all done poorly. The windows were all mismatched. It had some vinyl windows. It had some aluminum windows. It had some plexiglass windows, and it had some wood windows. That was an example of they had a dog upstairs. The window was busted out, so they, the dog had busted out some of the screening. That was exposed sewer line from the upstairs. There's a, that's how we purchased the property. It was in such horrid conditions that I don't know how it was inhabitable. Peeling paint, there's, you can see in the middle, it's a dead rodent on the floor, because it was rodent-infested, cockroach-infested, really bad. This is a letter, we started working with Halle. The city was well aware of the project back in March, and I have emails dating back to March 20-something too as well, because we changed the addresses. The addresses were really messed up. There were 508, 508 and a half, 510, 510 and a half. It was very confusing to tenants, so we changed the addresses through the city. We had to go through the whole process of working with Halle at the city to change it to 508 units A, B, C, and D, just to simplify everything for safety purposes for first responders. Here's a copy of the federal district. If you notice the little dotted line, that's our property, that is not in the federal district. So it's not a federal historic placement, it's not state historic placement, it's not city historic placement, and it's not in the federal historic district. I know, I'm not going to speculate, but I know why they didn't put it in, at least because it was so deteriorated and so far gone, that most of the characteristics that would have made it historic were gone. And that's why they didn't put it, I mean, I mean, that's, I remember having issues like that when I was a planning commissioner for seven years. Certain properties, although they met the age requirements, they were just so poorly remodeled and dilapidated that they didn't meet the criteria. I know in the staff report on page 1.3, she calls it a historic property, but maybe that was a typo. It's not a historic property. I don't know if she's referring to, because it's in a district, but she refers to it as historic property, and it's not historic. And I just wanted to show this map, and it's actually, you know, right at the borderline of where the district ends. I think it closely mirrors SD-19, but there's a few exceptions. And, you know, you have to ask yourself why the federal, why the feds didn't put it in. And I know why, it's because it didn't meet the criteria. This is a letter from French Park. The neighbors immediately to the left, to the east and south, and I'd like to read it, please, for the record, because they are ecstatic. Dear Ms. McCain, it was addressed to Melanie. I would like to take this opportunity to provide our sincerest and strongest support for our new neighbors at 508 East Washington. As you are aware, our campus is immediately adjacent to 508 East Washington, both on its eastern and southern property line. Consequently, it is very visible from our property, and its appearance and management has significant impact upon it. Prior to Urban Living Properties purchasing this property, the quality of life, both for our guests and employees, was very negatively impacted by the extremely blighted conditions of this fourplex. Not only was the property in a horrid condition, which made it hard to look at, but the previous tenants and the overcrowding of the small parcel caused significant problems for our guests, their visiting family members, and our employees. These included, but were not limited to, excessive noise, parking usage, graffiti, trash, public urination on our facilities. I would like to commend Urban Living Properties for the outstanding renovation of this property. They immediately contacted my staff and introduced themselves as the new neighbors, and they have collaborated, been working with us to assure not only the beautiful design and architectural improvements, but for the significant improvements to the immediate area and especially to our facility. We are grateful to them and their contractor for their professionalism and cleanliness during this project. Again, I would like to strongly support this project and communicate to you that several of our surrounding neighbors have also expressed support and are very pleased with the significant improvement of this project has made to the neighborhood. He was, Mr. Talmadge told me that several of the neighbors that either volunteer at the French Park Care Facility have publicly commented to me, as well as to me. I've had probably 20 or 21. I've had probably 20 or 25 neighbors that have been walking by, running by, and commented, "Thank you so much for cleaning up this property." And, you know, we bought it in good faith, we had to pay cash, and we did the worst thing that you can do as a landlord. We vacated it and cut off our revenue stream. So we spent a ton of money buying it cash and then we're putting another, probably, I don't know, quarter million into it, just to get it to the appropriate standards. And in the meantime, we have not been getting any revenue from it at all. It's really hard to do this, but it's the right thing to do because nobody's ever done it right. And we decided to do it right. New plumbing, new electrical, new everything that, because the property unfortunately had been in such poor repair that it just needed everything. And that's my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant?
I'd just like to conclude by saying that I can appreciate and I thank the French Park Architectural Review. I know they have a very difficult job, I know Melanie has a very hard job, and I'd like to publicly praise her because I know she stayed late a lot of times and she came in on days where she wasn't even supposed to be working to help get this here. I know we're on opposing sides of this, but I still have to do the right thing and thank you for all your hard work doing this. But, the property is not historic. It is just not a historic property. It's been modified beyond recognition and all the characteristics that should have made it, maybe it wasn't even able to be historic in the first place, but definitely not now. And lastly, just to reiterate that the neighborhood is very, very happy and supportive of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you Carlos.
And I'd be willing to work out any kind of compromise, that's why I'm here. We just want to get the project done.
Okay. Secretary, have we had any written communication at this point in time? Okay, is there a member of the public that will open up for public comment at this point in time? Is there a member of the public that would wish to comment on this item? I have one request, and that's Debbie McEwen.
Evening all. Section 8, General Provisions. All new construction excluding interior modifications and including the restoration, rehabilitation, alteration, and conversion and/or addition to any structure involving modification to the exterior of the structure within the area defined as historic French Park, SD 19, must proceed through established review processes. Okay, so there it is, right there. I have to say, a lot of what Carlos says was correct. It does look nice, but it is simply not the right style. It's just not right. So you can get tangled up in the semantics of the word historic. When this document, and by the way, do all of you have a copy of this? It's a great little thing, it's kind of a quick guide. So when you're a little bit tangled up and not sure, it's so simple, there's like 10 items, you could peel right through it. A resident, when she was putting our neighborhood on the National Register of Historic Places, Diane Marsh, you may have heard her name before, she was the one who did that yeoman's task. That was a big screaming deal. And, you know, we've tried to follow that to the letter over the years.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, might just ask one thing about that?
Yeah.
The guidelines you just held up.
Uh huh.
So I'm reading SD 19, Section 8, right now, and I think, I believe it's the portion that you read.
Uh huh.
Then right under it, it talks about the architectural design guidelines to be used by the committee. Is that the booklet that this is referring to?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I just, I didn't see it on the website or anything, so, okay, thank you.
So we have, I think we have just a couple of issues going here. You know, you had asked, if you don't mind me going back just a little bit for a point of clarification, the last sentence is, "Finally privileged, I'll be granted by the planning commission." And you asked, "Does this happen all the time?" And then Melanie's explaining it usually happens at neighborhood level, at committee level. We've probably done, how many reviews? A hundred? Is that a good number? A hundred? A hundred of these, either smaller or larger. It's only gone once to the planning commission, one time. We have managed it in-house quite well, and it has met all of the needs of this little document. We've managed to do that. So with Jeff's, with Jeff and Melanie working, all of us coming together and using this document, the process does work. I could go on, does anyone have a question?
I'm going to let you talk. I gave Carlos the...
I could rave on for days.
No, I know, I do.
Because I can cut it short.
But we have a few questions for you, we have questions for you.
Is this questions for me?
It's for you, yes. How does an individual who purchases a home in French Park or a person who buys a property in French Park know about that booklet? Is that booklet presented to them?
I'm going to tell you how they know about it. Usually when we see a sign go up, the first, and let's have some fun here. I usually go to the Realtor and say, "Do you know you're in a historic district?" Half the time they say no, half the time they say yes. When they say no, I hand them one. So they can't play that game later about not disclosing. We've been down this road many times. So first we talk to that, and then, I have to say this, I'm feeling slightly not responsible, but when I watched that project proceeding, I had faith in the system. I thought that because he was going belly to the ground into that project, that everything was okay. I had been traveling a lot, I know that Jeff is always on it with his reviews, I'm thinking, "I must have been out of town when all that was happening." I didn't know that it wasn't done at all. So, I'm usually the one that puts on the brakes when I see something happening. It's just mine, it's my task in this process. This time I failed, and look at the cluster we have going right now. So that being said, I'm sorry, did you have more questions or was that it?
Well, I guess I'm trying to understand the process because is it a process that's backed by the city? And if it is, is it written somewhere that it's a process that's together and it's your responsibility to make sure people know?
When it says, like in general provisions, it's Section 8 of the SD, it says it will come to the committee. The committee meets, they write a review.
I understand that it says that, but I'm trying to understand, if I'm new to the neighborhood, how do I know that that's what I have to do? Is the city going to inform me?
I'm going to hop in for a second.
Can I make a comment here?
Yes, Canada.
We're focusing a lot on historic preservation or historic issues. Right now, this is a zoning issue. The zoning is SD 19.
That's what she's telling me.
The zoning says, and that's what the zoning is, that's what the zoning of this property is. The zoning says that you have to go through this review process. Whether you're contributing, whether you're a landmark, whether you're a key, whether you're non-contributing, as this house is, you still have to go through the process.
I'm not questioning the process, Canada.
When you purchase a piece of property, you check the zoning.
Okay, but I'm not questioning...
May I answer that question? I think I know now where you were going with that. If you bought the house and you want, you thought, "Hey, I'm going to change out those windows, I don't like them." You'll go to the planning counter, and someone at that planning counter, I'm going to say it's worked countless times, it has worked, they'll say, "Hey, you're in SD 19, you need to do X instead of Y."
So did that happen?
I don't have the answer to that, that I do not know. I do know this, there have been times in the past where there has been a failure in that spot, but usually we catch it, sometimes sooner, sometimes later. It isn't 100%. And so I really can't speak to whether it was 100% this time and the applicant didn't follow the, you know, follow the bouncing ball, or if someone failed him at the counter, not for me to speculate.
Can planning tell us, did that happen at the counter?
The applicant did not apply for permits until he was notified that he needed permits. So, as you saw in the timeline, he did apply immediately after he received information from code enforcement that he needed it for the exterior improvements.
Well, that contradicts what Melanie said, because it sounds like he applied for the roofing permit, which would be an exterior permit. He applied for that, he did not get it issued, but to my colleagues...
He did not get, yes, that was the only permit he...
But when he applied, I apologize.
And at that time, was he informed that although perhaps the property was not considered historical, but it was in a historical neighborhood, that any proceedings with exterior construction, that he'd have to come get approval or go to the, through the process?
Or to be more technical, I mean, to what you're saying, essentially, hey, I'm in, am I in an R1 or am I in an R3? No ma'am or sir, you're in an SD 19. What on earth does that mean? And then you complete the sentence. Did that conversation ever happen?
So I'll just answer broadly, that generally, staff is trained to know that SD 19 and SD 40 are two historic districts in town. And that if you're in either one of those districts, there's special guidelines that apply to you. So staff is trained that if someone asks, "I'm doing exterior modifications," not a roof typically, because a roof doesn't require anything special, if you will.
But is that not a red flag? If they're going to start doing construction?
Well, just to put it in perspective, if any one of us were to get a roof permit and we're not asking about windows or siding, people usually address your question, "How do I get a roof permit?" You get a roof permit, it's like to like, it's a non-issue. But we usually go out of our way because we're sensitive to this sort of things happening. But I guess that the point is that the applicant did not come in and ask for exterior modifications other than his roof. If he had, that conversation would have taken place. The question wasn't posed, so...
So the folks that bought the property, were they informed, were they given the yellow booklet? And why is the yellow booklet being given only by Ms. McEwen and not the city?
So the, so I'm actually the...
That's the understanding I have.
Yeah, well, you've got a lot of enthusiasm and the SD residents have really taken upon themselves to protect their neighborhood and the historic value, so they proactively do that, just as some of the neighborhoods welcome new neighbors. Everyone has a little different thing that they do in their neighborhood. For these folks, they really want to preserve their neighborhood, so they go out of their way to provide that. But, as the French Park liaison, many times people, when they first buy their property, they get routed to me, and then I will send them a PDF of both the zoning and the design guidelines and say, "Hey, contact me, here's the link to the neighborhood you..." So we do as much as we can on that. Now, to speak to Commissioner Becerra's point, we are in the process of putting the guidelines up on the website, as well as the Henninger Park Design Guidelines to make it even easier for the public. But I think the best way to communicate is when folks come and ask, and they find out they're in SD 19, they're shepherded typically to me, and I give them all the information.
You know, as a resident of San Ana, I'm very proud of the historical areas that we have. I think it's amazing how we can maintain them and continue to preserve them. You know, we want likeness of each area to keep its uniqueness. But when I bought a condo, I was immediately given the HOA rules because they wanted me to follow them and be aware of them. So, is there something we need to change in the process so that when folks buy in these distinct areas, they're getting that immediately in their packet?
Well, there's always, there's always something we can do, and we'll certainly brainstorm with French Park and brainstorm some more. I guess it's a bit about buyer beware. If you buy a house and it has an unpermitted bedroom on it, if you didn't do your homework, you bought that. When you buy a property and it's in SD 19 and you didn't research to know what that meant, there's, you know, there's a little bit of responsibility, there's a responsibility when you're buying things as well. So we're, we will do our very best to get our website up to speed, and there's been times where, as Debbie was saying, it coordinated with the real estate folks, trying to get in there proactively, and certainly we could, we could help facilitate that more with French Park, try and provide some one-page summary or something. So we definitely can always improve, but I think when the city does a pretty good job about when asked, "What is SD 19?", we have some really good information to share with them.
Thank you.
Commissioner, go ahead.
I'm just a little concerned here because, I mean, I know the staff usually does a great job with, you know, reports and investigations, and I'm just hearing two different things. You know, one from the applicant, yes or no, it wasn't sand finish and no rail, they said yes rail, so, you know, it's going to be hard for me to take a vote when I'm hearing two different things.
So, yeah, I'd be happy to respond to that. So one of the things that's challenging for staff is that when you don't have the opportunity to see what it was before, you don't necessarily know what was there before. Now, for the finish, the sand stucco finish, I applaud the technical knowledge of having that specialized name. For us, what we were trying to communicate is that it was a sand version, you know, rough sand, was not stucco, it's that, those two concepts, so, so I, there's that point. And then as far as the rail, in some of the conversations with the applicant, it was alluded to that there was a rail. Having not seen what was there before, it's hard to know, so that's where those kind of inconsistencies come up.
Thank you for covering that.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you Melanie. I have no other item, no other request to speak from the audience, so at this point in time, I'm going to close the public portion of this. Is that Lisa? We're good? Okay. Going to close the public speaking and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just to kind of close out on what my colleague had talked about as far as this whole process. In the city of Los Angeles where they have historic preservation zones, it doesn't matter what you do to the property, once you're at the building counter, they immediately have you go over to planning and get a sign off. When you get a business license in the city, the first line after your name and your address is a planning sign off. They all come over to the planning counter. Unless that's changed in the last year or two, all business license applications come to planning. I don't see where Henninger Park or French Park couldn't be any different, where just if they're doing something to the property, it's rather be safe than sorry, even if it's interior, just make sure that it's not something as Mr. Bustamante showed, you know, exterior sewer lines or something. I mean, you know, let's just try to figure this out. Coming back, as Canada had mentioned, this is a zoning issue. This, we're not here trying to get into what types of windows and whatnot goes on to this property. We're being told by staff that the applicant did work, that didn't go through a proper process, that's tied to zoning, not to Ms. McEwen's pamphlet, but thankfully, Ms. McEwen's pamphlet is actually referenced in the document, that's part of the zoning that was adopted by the city council long before we were up here. So I'm kind of torn. I also hear the applicant, and I appreciate what the applicant has done in regards to some of the improvements on the project, the fact that you're investing in the city and trying to bring in more housing. I mean, we all talk up here about how much we need housing, and here's a property that had substandard housing. I mean, from the pictures I saw, I wouldn't want anybody I liked or disliked to live in that building. It was awful, it was atrocious. So I appreciate the work that you've done to clean it up, but at the same time, we're also bound by looking at what the zoning says. And the zoning to me, you know, seems abundantly clear that at some point, you're going to go to staff, staff's going to direct you to the distinguished folks of the French Park Committee, and then it's going to, you know, we'll debate this later, but Planning Commission. So, but at some point, there's something spelled out, it's in the zoning, it's not something that someone came up with over a coffee break, this is something that was adopted by the city council. So I'm really torn at this point. One thing I'll throw out for my colleagues, I know the applicant talked about compromise, and I think something to kind of ponder or think about, is that I know in the city of San Ana, a lot of the facades are actual easements. They're actually owned by the city in downtown, most likely. You know, you can't mess with the front of a building on Broadway in downtown without, not just simply following a zoning stipulation, but it's an actual easement that's owned by the city. So there's a lot more work going into making any sort of modifications here. But, what that tells me though, is that they didn't seek an easement over the entire property or the roof and all these other things, they were focused on what you saw when you walked down the street, what you saw as you drove down a street and what was presented. And a lot of the important features tend to be on those facades. So, something that I was looking at and doing some homework on, the minimalist, minimalist traditional style, one of the big features are the windows, the multi-pane windows, just throwing that out there. I don't want to get into features that we would want to see or not see, but just simply saying that that's part of that, and it's something that's more emphasized on a facade, so something on the front of the property. So, I got to tell you guys I'm torn, because part of me wants to feel that the applicant should have done the process correctly, that the city should, or city staff should have ensured that he went through the process correctly, but at the same time, we're not at that point. We can't, you know, turn back the clock. So we've got work that's been done, some of it I think is quality work, but at the same time, I think that at the very least, very least, we need to at least look at the facade as something that looks more appropriate. In the neighborhood, in fact, I was looking in the National Register of Historic Places listing, and it actually talks about the minimal traditional architectural style. It doesn't go into, it cites two properties that epitomize this style, and they're the Warner Apartments at 817 North French and the Brio Apartments at 901 North Mentor. And they both have those windows that seem to be emblematic of this style. So in looking at that, as the applicant said, this property is not listed on a city register, national register, it's not in the nomination document to the National Register of Historic Places, but at least the document does describe what this style entails. I look at the folks in French Park, you guys know your styles for your neighborhood much better, because there's always subtle tweaks to a certain area when it comes to the style. So with that, I'd like to continue the discussion with my colleagues. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I am appalled, the effort of the applicant to improve the condition and improve the property, but unfortunately, now, under city zoning, the applicant should comply with the SD nineteen as they are approved by the council. In that regard, I am supporting, I would like to propose that deny the application and not approve the condition use permit as stated.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Is that a motion?
Eighth made motion.
That is a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll... Yeah, for discussion.
You'll second? Okay.
Is there any more discussion?
Is there any further discussion on this?
Commissioner Becerra? I just have a question. I still asked a question. In the report, planning staff says deteriorated historic features shall be repaired rather than replaced. Can you explain what you mean? How can you repair without replacing it, pretty much? Can you explain that a little bit?
So a number of the houses in French Park have old windows, and you can actually take pieces, say it's trim, wood trim, say it's the sill that's deteriorated, you can, you know, take that out, replace that sill, or you can patch it, or there's a number of different techniques where you don't actually replace it, like take it out, you're more repairing it. But on occasion, where you, you know, you have to replace a piece that's totally deteriorated, then you would either mill it to be exactly the same size, and you kind of fill. Close enough?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yeah.
If I may ask either Ms. McEwen or Mr. Dickman to the podium, please? I'm glad it's Mr. Dickman, because I read the email, both of them, front and back.
Good, good, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
So my question to you, as a representative of the French Park Committee, if the applicant comes back to you with the property as it is today, you don't need to get into specifics, but I know you gave us a really well-done, well-reviewed lengthy list of things that the applicant performed on the site, but, you know, obviously did not get approval or recommended approval from your committee. But are there, I guess, is there, bluntly state, is there wiggle room? Is there work that's been done that the committee could say, "I'm not happy with it, I might have to take and add asset afterwards, but nonetheless, there are more important things to worry about on this particular property"?
You know, I'm not going to speak for the committee without having a chance to speak with the committee, because it's a consensus group. And in terms of, maybe you're talking about kind of, what's the most important, is there something that's...
That's probably a better question, yes.
Kind of a superior sort of, you know, it's always character-defining features, and it includes everything. So it's the walls, and it's the wood, and it's the trim, and the eaves, and any details, knee braces, all of these little decorative things that you won't find on houses today. We're attentive to those. We may not have written them down for every house, but we have a pretty good sense of most of the houses in our neighborhood. You know, windows are a big deal, and we, I've been doing this for almost 20 years. Debbie, many more years before me. And so this is well more than 100 reviews, and hundreds of meetings, and calls, and discussions, to try to follow through with what the city, what the city has adopted. We take it seriously, because there are only two neighborhoods that have these guidelines crafted for itself. This is just not something to set aside. This is really important to us. We followed that in our house. So we had a lot of deteriorated windows, and we repaired them. I've got to take them out and repair them again, because, you know, 15 years has passed. Windows are big, but we also worry about the structure of, not the structure, but the siding and walkways and the details of the brick. You know, a lot of the houses are in, you know, they excavated soil out, they put it kind of on the pad, they elevated the house, and they elevated the house itself with these cripple walls, to give it a little prominence, even though the houses may not be all that significant in terms of appearance. Windows are a big deal. We had one gentleman a number of years ago, and this was a house on this city's historic register, and he had replaced them. Work often gets done on the weekends in French Park, right? So we troll on the weekends, because then you call the city on Monday. And this guy had done that, at least my memory was, Melanie, correct me. And so he put in aluminum windows, and then the city said, you know, "You need to take those out." And then before we could even get back with the city, and the city back with the owner, he had put in wood windows, trying to make amends, while they didn't fit the design. And so you also need to have the dimensions of the windows. They looked the same, these were different, and they didn't match. And the poor fellow had to pull those all out and put the new windows back in. The windows that were there, and I'm not exactly sure what was there, because there was so much brushing coverage, but generally, generally, you can repair windows. Even if most of the wood is gone, there's putties, and it's really time and labor, it's not that much money, it's time and labor. And you can rebuild a window. I've done it for multiples of windows in my house. I've only had to replace three or four windows, and they were made to match, because I followed the design guide. But I still have those windows in the back. You want to keep those, you never throw anything away. We always tell folks, when we get to see the review, when we get to see it before the work is done, we say, "Save yourself some money, don't replace everything." Just get, just, if you have a competent contractor, you know, the materials are available at several stores in Orange County, this kind of putty, this permanent replacement that they recommend you use on windows, that you can do this on the weekends, and then you re-glaze it, you put the windows back in, and it's a weekend. I can do one double-hung window in a weekend, and that's if I start early on one day, and like on a Saturday morning, I can finish on time Sunday evening. So it's doable, and then you still have the character. You don't have the insulation, you still, you know, the windows are a little bit narrow because you sent some of the wood down, but you still have a high-quality window in a house that still looks like it was made for that house. Now, the design guide and the houses listed there, that was produced 20 years ago. That's not, that document does not get amended every year. That list is static of that time. So 20 years ago, that house has gotten older. It's now 70 years old. And it would be, if the city gets around to our neighborhood to do an assessment of the neighborhood, don't know if they do that, that would be one of the houses we would want to look at. We have another house in the neighborhood, a little bit older than this, but it had the same issues. They've modified the stucco, but we still had the eaves, most of the windows, and the owner had started to change the windows out to aluminum. We stopped that. He put those back, and then he disposed of the aluminum windows. But this house, if we would have had the opportunity, if the city was coming back to the north part of this, northeast part of the city, and looking at these historic properties, this one would probably qualify, even with the changes, because it's at that halfway point. The applicant's looking at it halfway, the glass half-full, "Oh, it's bad." We're looking at it as the opportunity to make it right, to get it really close to back to where it was. Then we have two or three or four houses of that same architectural style in the neighborhood. And this is dramatically different from anything in French Park. If you all let the windows go forward, the windows as they are now, and the stucco and the appearance, you've kind of allowed your nose to go under the tent, and that's what we try to avoid. So if you institutionalize that, that for one, it'll happen again, then why did you give the variance? We can't explain that to the next guy or gal that wants to come in with a modification, whether they know what they're doing or not. It makes it harder for us, we're volunteers, right? We're trying to implement what the city's adopted. And we think it's important, because our neighborhood is fondly remembered by people that have lived there. We have a high tenant ratio to permanent owners, like 80, 85 percent. But people that live there, they come back to the hood, and they literally come through, and they say, "We lived here, we loved it here." In part, because it still looks like a neighborhood. We still have mature trees, it's kind of a quiet place despite being between the downtown and the freeway. And you've given us the tool to do that, and we want to keep that tool healthy. We'd like to see the tool updated a little bit. Poor Melanie has to deal with this kind of old outdated dull tool sometimes. The list is out of date, some properties now would probably qualify, we'd like to revisit that, but you all don't have the resources to do it. So we're working with an old dull tool, and applicants that sometimes should know better. And then you have us trying to do our lives and all these other things, plus do the neighborhood stuff, which we do for free, right? So help us out, you know, follow the design guide. We'd like, you know, it's not an historic structure on the current list, but it certainly would have been in the queue for us to consider it if the city would have evaluated the neighborhood. You know, 20 years have gone by, and this property could have been, you know, at least considered for addition to the list, then... And we review these things fairly promptly, usually within two weeks. Sometimes we have to get different people's schedules together to review it, but, you know, we make comments on these sorts of things in a timely manner. And I think this one, if we would have had the chances, I indicated in our letter a couple of times, if given the chance, we would have said, "Just repair it, save yourself some money, at least on the outside, make the inside as nice as you want, and that's cool." But the outside, try to maintain that care if you can.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I modify my motion?
You may.
I would like to modify to motion to adopt resolution deny site plan review number 21705, and recommend the application to meet with the History of French Park Architecture Committee to negotiate, come to agreement, to make both sides happy. I was, you know, also, the French Park Architect Design Committee should understand, they appreciate the investment, the effort the applicant had put in to the project, to improve the project. I think, in my opinion, the applicant and the design committee could able to come to agreement to compromise somewhat, to make everybody happy, and then by then, they're coming back to us, could be approved by the zoning administrator, or come back to us, I'd be more than happy to support it.
That's a long motion.
Yeah, I was just...
That's a long motion.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Did you get all that? Are we good?
I was going to say, Secretary, could you read that back, please?
Ken, you're way too detailed.
Can we keep it under, like, 30 words or less?
Be more than happy to modify.
What you'd like to do, I mean, because...
The adopter issue is...
Mr. Vice Chair, before you do that, I just want to ask one question, and that is, so if we deny the application, so the applicant has invested in this property, you know, I imagine his tenacity, he's going to go back and try it again, is he going to have to go back and pay all the fees all over again for the site plan review and the whole process?
I would ask that you deny it without prejudice, or recommend, in which case, it would allow them to come back immediately on it, or you could start a motion similar to what he's suggesting, directing the applicant to look at modifying those specific features and come back, go through the design review process.
Well, I like the direction you're going, but I was almost wondering, should we just continue it, to like a date uncertain at this point, but with the recommendation...
With direction, yes.
With direction that the applicant go back to staff and the review committee to work out some compromise at this point.
Yes, you could do that. That's an easy thing.
So if that's what you'd like, okay, so I'll...
I'm not that technical, so I'll leave it to you.
But I thought you covered everything.
First of all, first of all, first of all, we have a motion on the table at this point in time, our initial motion, initial motion to deny...
The site plan.
Okay.
Outright deny.
And then it was second. So at this point in time, do we need to...
Can we propose a substitute?
Do you want to make a withdrawal motion?
Or do you want to withdraw your motion and do a substitute?
Yeah, I would like to withdraw my first motion and replay with the second motion.
Okay, and the second motion is...
I'll jump in and say...
Commissioner Becerra?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to continue item, site plan review number 201705, to a date uncertain, with the specific direction that the applicant work with staff and the review committee to come up with a compromise emphasizing the facade, but not limited to that as far as the features go.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
I'm second.
Okay, so Nguyen, Commissioner Nguyen was second on that. Any further discussion at this point in time? I'd just like to make one comment myself, and just say that, you know, this project, it's confusing, and it's a challenging situation. Historic is a challenging situation from many perspectives. I mean, just maintaining it and trying to understand what's the right thing to do, and everything else is difficult. This is not an easy one. By no shake of the imagination is this one an easy one, just because of the, just the boundary lines that were established for French Park under the historic, under the National Historic Registry versus the boundary lines of SD nineteen. They're not identical, so they're confusing. Having said that, again, you know, I think other commissioners have said, the work that has been done, you know, it's obviously helped the neighborhood, it's a plus for the neighborhood in many respects, but we go back to the fact that there is certain guidelines and requirements that we have to maintain, and I think we should continue to maintain this. I mean, and to answer your question earlier, you made a comment about, you know, how do people find out about that? You know, I can tell you that, you know, in my neighborhood, people come in and they buy a house, and we tell them, first thing you do, call up Hallie Silberlesky and talk to her, and she'll tell you everything about historic. They don't do it. And they just go about doing what they want to do, and then they're confused at the end as to why they didn't get put on the historic register, or why they didn't get milzak or something like that. So it's a tough situation, and the city could do a better job, and the neighborhoods could do a better job. And I think we all try to do that, but it sometimes doesn't meet everybody's expectations. Having said that, I'd like to bring this to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to item, public hearing, item number two, modify the conditional use permit number 2011-09 to allow the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for the premise consumption at Marcos Zamora, located at 3701 West McFadden Avenue, units G, H, I, and J.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. Before you, we do have a modification to an existing conditional use permit, 2011-9, for Marisco Zamora Restaurant, located at 3701 West McFadden Avenue, for units G, H, I, and J. As previously stated, this is a modification to an existing and approved conditional use permit, 2011-9, that originally allowed the sale for on-premise consumption for beer and wine. We are, the applicant is requesting that we up, that they modify the existing conditional use permit to allow a type 47 for the on-premise consumption of distilled spirits. The sale of distilled spirits for on-premise consumption. At this time, the applicant doesn't propose any new constructions or expansion of the existing facility. Here is an area of the site location. It is currently in our harbor mixed-use transit corridor, specific plan two. It is surrounded by commercial and industrial line uses. And in the red star, that is the units G, H, I, and J. Here is a site plan of the existing commercial buildings. Again, in the red star is the location indicating units G, H, I, and J. Here's an existing floor plan of what the restaurant consists, or is, has currently. It does, it consists of units G, H, I, and J, and red is the existing alcohol display area and room to store, or storage room. And it doesn't exceed the 5% gross floor area allowed per the municipal code. This is a site photo of the entrance of the restaurant. Once again, it's for unit G, H, I, and J. A project analysis, the site currently meets all the San Ana municipal code standards. The restaurant will continue to provide services to its community and its residents, I'm sorry, the community and its visitors to the city of San Ana. The standards will ensure that the restaurant will continue its service and not deviate from the planned operation reviewed at this time, and become, and will not become an attractive nuisance to the, to its surrounding neighborhood. With that, staff recommends that we approve conditioning use permit 2011, modification conditioning use 2011-9 as condition. And the applicant is here for any questions, as well as staff.
Again, sorry. Again, sorry, can I say this again? Does any commissioner have anything to disclose with regard to this item before? No, I haven't said it. Okay, any commissioner have any questions of staff at this point?
Yes.
Commissioner Newland?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So I'm looking at the conditions, and on condition number one, I was wondering why you're including a condition regarding a planned sign program? I just, typically with these applications, I haven't seen that before. I'm, I'm gonna make an assumption that there is some existing condition that is making this something that staff feels more comfortable having us approve if this was attached.
That's correct. This is one of the conditions from the original condition use permit. We also stated that we wanted to amend a couple of the old conditions of approval that have been met, so we just took over from the original CUP to, and then we did add a couple of our own conditions.
So, so then this planned sign program condition, condition number one, is that a carryover from the...
That's correct, a carryover.
So, so I guess then they didn't quite do as well with this condition as they did the others that staff is recommending that we remove?
Correct.
Okay, and then, I guess, and then condition number three, the applicant shall submit interior tenant improvement plans to the city prior to the release of the ABC license to legalize all removal of non-load-bearing walls. So has there been illegal construction inside that now city staff is a little more concerned about?
Yeah, during staff's research and analysis, it was determined that there were no permits released or obtained for the combination, or to combine units G, H, I, and J during the initial CUP approval. So we just want to make sure that the applicant is aware that they do have to submit tenant improvements for the unpermitted of removal of the non-bearing walls.
So typically speaking, then, let's say, you know, you've got a hollowed-out shell in an existing building, applicant comes in, he's gonna put in all the bells and whistles for a restaurant. So normally, you would see tenant improvement plans go to building and so on. So I guess, in this case here, this is just kind of a, a condition that's just, I guess, reaffirming that, yes, make sure you do these things, and with the stipulation that the city's basically not gonna sign off on the ABC, or telling the ABC everything's okay until those plans are submitted. And would that be something typically, though, in another situation where someone has a restaurant, they're going through all the work, staff wouldn't want to give the ABC the green light until those things were submitted and approved?
That's correct. And then traditionally, typically, we do the first step, usually we do see the tenants come in and submit TI, and then apply for the alcohol license, you know, having everything in order. It would just, this is one of the cases that unfortunately, they work backwards, and we just want to make sure that everything complies, especially if we're upgrading from a type 41 to a type 47, knowing that we probably, I mean, this is the first time we see them since their original approval.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Bitchin?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I see that under the project background in 2011, originally, the extended alcohol sales time to 2:00 AM was denied. Was it due to any police report, or why was it denied then?
So that was the first time that it was presented to the, the zoning administrator. It was denied, there were a lot of community outreach, a lot of community members that were opposed to the, to the extended hours. During that analysis, it was determined that it, it wouldn't be, it would, it would cause a nuisance to the existing or surrounding areas. There was the school that is nearby, not nearby, but is a couple, a block away, that did come out and speak against the project. But if you kind of just look into a little bit more, it was then approved by the planning commission. So they do have an after, active after-hours application.
So it wasn't due to, like, police crime in the area and all that?
No, and then, we haven't had any, there wasn't any major or huge incidents that would, that police had any, the police didn't have any issues at this time.
Thank you. Can you tell me what's directly across the street? It's hard for me.
Adjacent, on the, on the west side?
I think Walmart, isn't it?
McDonald's. So, it's on McFadden and Harbor?
Mm-hmm.
It's inside in the shopping center there?
Right, it's actually not within the Walmart shopping center, it's next to the Chipotle. So it's next to Chipotle in Sioux City, that's correct.
So what's behind them?
Behind them, we have just industrial uses.
More industrial?
Yeah.
So, any side, not the front, because that would be Harbor, I mean, right? So on either side, is there a neighborhood, or is it still just all industrial and cement?
Medially adjacent, it's just all industrial, though, we do begin to see the residential after a block over, so going towards east, the east side. There is a school, and then after the school is all the residential.
Thank you.
Do you have an area, police report on the police services for the, for the project? I know that indicated below 20% death, or, is, was any police service call for the, for last twelve months?
Not with me at the moment, but if I do recall, there was one or two, but not for that specific site, or that specific unit, or that business, it was just within the area.
Is the applicant present at the hearing?
The applicant is present, correct.
Any possible, could I ask the applicant?
You can, let's, let's bring that question up with the applicant while we bring you in. I just have one question.
Yes.
In looking at this, is there an, do they have an entertainment license at this point in time?
They did during the initial CUP approval, but during, when we did adopt the new entertainment ordinance, they would have to reapply for a new one.
They have to reapply?
That's correct.
They don't have one now?
Not an active one, no.
Pardon?
Not an active one, no.
An active one, because they do, it is stated here that they're providing entertainment?
Correct.
Okay, and are you following, is that one of the conditions as far as this application goes?
Of approval, no, but we did put it in our table. It's in the...
It's in the table?
But we're not approving a staff report. We're approving a resolution.
It's in the staff report, yeah, sorry.
But we're not approving the staff report. But, so when did the entertainment permit expire?
When the entertainment ordinance was approved in 2013.
Eleven, yeah, November 2nd.
So, and... And isn't it renewed annually?
The entertainment permit, yes.
So, so am I to assume then they haven't had a valid entertainment permit since 2014?
Since, correct.
And we're in 2017?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to speak at this time? I think we have a question for the applicant, so if one would join us, please. Could you identify who you are and...
My name is Paul Sepulveda, I'm the business manager for Zamoras. Mr. Zamoras is here accompanying me, who is the owner, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you, appreciate it. We currently have a beer and wine license, so this was just adding the still liquor, which would allow us to serve mixed drinks and margaritas, which what, the most people come in, the Mexican restaurant, they ask, they want margaritas, and we cannot offer that right now until we have, that's the reason why we applied for and received the type 47 license, so that's why we're here.
That's exactly what my, I would like to ask you, what's the purpose, why you wanted to, to modify your CUP from type 41 to type 47, which is add, adding alcohol, but, you know, to, to able to offer margarita to the customer, that's a very good reason for it, especially with the culture.
That's one of the main reasons, actually.
Could, also, could you tell me, there is any plan for entertainment at, at your restaurant, in your restaurant? Are there plans for entertainment, or the entertainment schedule?
The entertainment is limited to karaoke three times a night, three times a week.
Okay. Is there, are you dancing?
No, no dancing.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Commissioner Newland?
Question for staff, all the applicants up here, so, isn't karaoke something that, if I, if I have a business, that I would need an entertainment permit to have karaoke?
Yes.
Wouldn't that fall under the amplified music component of it?
Yes, it'd be category two.
Okay, but it would be an entertainment permit?
That's correct.
Which currently the applicant does not have.
Not a valid one, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
I have one, one other. Has anybody from the city ever spoke to you in regards to the windows, as far as the allowable amount of signage you can have on your windows? And the reason I ask that is because I'm aware that the city has a standard for 25% coverage, and staff snapped a beautiful picture of what looks like, I don't know, roughly 75, 85% covered?
No, we have not talked to the city.
So no code enforcement, nobody's ever spoke to them?
We had, in the, the prior conditional use permit, that was initially brought up, and we rectified it at that time, and we hadn't changed it since then. So somebody came out several years ago and checked the windows, said it was okay, so I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Secretary, have we received any written communications at this point in time? We'll now open for public hearing. With that, I have one person who would like to speak, and that's Mr. Chris Schmidt.
Good evening, good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Chris Schmidt, I am the vice president of the Windsor Village Neighborhood Association. It's located approximately a quarter mile east of the location of this restaurant establishment. I drive by this business several times during the week, Harbor Boulevard is a major thoroughfare in our city. I know they're applying for a CP, a CUP to modify their liquor license, I'm here to talk about the signage. Back in June, I went there and took several photos. As Mr. Commissioner Bessera has pointed out, the windows are painted. When I took a photo, the sign up at the top had a banner underneath it. When was this photo taken, do you know?
Ask the board right now.
Okay, and also, on the concrete facade above it, there's an LED light strip around it that goes off multicolored, it's animated. I don't know if any of you have driven down Harbor Boulevard at night recently, from Seventeenth to Eddinger, there is nothing but flashing animated LED signs that I've asked both Sergio Verino and Estel Rodarte to address, and that's what I'm here tonight, is to talk about the signage. I don't know of any other business in the shopping center that's open past 10:00 PM, there's a Chipotle, there's literally a music, or instrument, musical instrument business that has vinyl graphics from top to ceiling on their windows. On the other side is a Herbalife vinyl graphics, top to bottom. So before we approve this modification, I would ask the city to continue this item, to address the signage, because I think it's a lot more than that when I took the photo in June on the windows. And regarding the neighborhood, just to give you a little history, that's the Santa Anita Neighborhood Association directly behind it, that's the first gang injunction in our city, it's over fifteen years old. Russell Elementary School is located right behind there. So I'm not against margaritas, I love margaritas, I'll probably go have one there when they're allowed there, but I'm just concerned about what we're allowing in this area, in such a very area of our city that's been impacted quite a lot, so I please ask you to maybe reconsider this item, continue it, and have the signage addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this point in time? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public session.
Mr. Newland?
He was waving to the guy going out the door. Seeing none, we'll close the public session at this point in time and bring it back to the council, or commission. Do we have, Commissioner?
I'm, as for, you know, other liquor licenses as well, but my concern is that, in order to have the community's support, or, you know, not have so many questions, you'd have to be a friendly neighbor and comply with certain things, and I feel that there's some things that perhaps have been ignored, and to hear that you have been entertaining without a permit, and some other things that weren't done when you first moved in, I'd like to see perhaps more compliance before we can approve something like this. Thank you.
Commissioner Bessera?
I wanted to add just a little bit to what she said, you, you stole the words out of my mouth, thank you. No, I, I think that when you give somebody more ability, in this case, more ability to serve full liquor, I think you have to earn it, you know, and, and really, the bar's pretty low, just don't screw up. And, and all these applicant, or, all these conditions here are essentially training wheels that shouldn't be on this thing, you know? Tent improvements that, not following the rules, I mean, just the picture right here is a dead giveaway, and you've got 85% of the windows covered, and there's just so many of these little things, and I appreciate staff's willingness to try to work with the applicant and try to help them out, but I, I'm with my colleague here, I, I wouldn't be comfortable supporting the approval tonight, like we did with our previous application, you know, perhaps maybe we continue it for six months so that the applicant doesn't have to go through the same process from square one, but at the same time, perhaps demonstrate to the commission that you can behave and follow the rules. Thank you.
And Commissioner...
I just want to also agree with what you're saying, I think it's a great location for, in the type of food you serve, and yes, margaritas would be great, and I would definitely approve it, but again, learning that there is no entertainment permit and the signage. I know that Ms. Contreras mentioned that we need to be family and business-friendly, I, I know that they do a lot, they host a lot of meetings, like, for example, Los Amigos of Santana, and, you know, I appreciate that they do that. Maybe they weren't informed that, about the signage, because I know the gentleman said that no one told him about it, so maybe, as a city, we have to do a better job at telling the applicants when they apply for some permit, like this one, they're applying for the distilled spirits, maybe then the staff should actually have a checkoff list, okay, well, are they offering entertainment, then you need to do this before you do that. So I don't know what we can do together to make that improvement, so that when it comes to us, we don't have to turn it down to come back in six months or whenever we need to vote on it, so. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Newland?
I'm somewhat agree with some of the commissioner on the opinion, but I am a very, I am pro-business of up in our city, and I complement the business morals and have to, to apply for the good use permit for type 47 to be able to improve your business activity. I am support your application, first of all, modifications of U.P. and permit 2011-9 as condition.
Yeah.
Wait, before, you, you just made a motion. You just made a motion.
I'll second that.
And, but did you make a motion before that?
No.
Okay, so, you have a motion?
Question. He said as condition, which is exactly as it is written by staff, is that what is as conditioned?
Unless you add additional conditions.
Unless you add conditions. So, you've made a motion, Commissioner Newland?
Yes.
Is there a second to his motion?
I second.
You second his motion, okay? All right, so we have a motion and a second at this point in time. All right. Any discussion on the motion at this point?
I'll just say that I'm not gonna be supporting the motion as it is. I, I too am pro-business, but I'm also pro-good business and pro-quality business, and not to say that the business doesn't probably offer some great food and drink, but unfortunately, they haven't demonstrated the responsibility of being able to follow the rules in order to earn a reward, and that's what we would be doing, is rewarding bad behavior, and I won't be supporting it.
But I think it's the, part of it, it's the city's responsibility, I think, to also tell them about how to be in compliance. I mean, that's why I'm approving it, because I think, maybe the city as well, you know, we can work together with the business owners, and not just them, but other business owners to just tell them, look, this is how, if you're gonna put business, we're gonna approve your business. I thought that's what we do when we approve a business, I mean, don't we tell them how big your signage can be or not? So I was talking about proving it, I, I think...
Well, I think, I think if you look at the conditions that are in here, it, it's obvious that the city has tried to work with the applicant... Well, I think, I think if you look at the conditions that are in here, it, it's obvious that the city has tried to work with the applicant. And this picture, I mean, they took their own picture and showing us blatant violation of the sign code. I mean, there's conditions in the proposed resolution because staff doesn't feel 100% comfortable, as was mentioned earlier. They're not, all of our other applications that we have for these sorts of CUPs usually just have the bare minimal conditions and unless we feel obliged to add something because of the site or whatnot. In this case here, it's the operational sort of conditions that we're seeing here, you know? Make sure that you go and do your approved tend improvements, which every, well, most other businesses do. Here, we're actually having to enshrine it and remind them. To me, that calls into question, if they're, if they're bringing in professional folks to work on their project, a licensed contractor is going to know, hey, I got to go to the city and get a permit for, for the interior work. They don't, they're not doing that. And, and the windows, okay, fine. I can say maybe, you know, code enforcement didn't go out there and they didn't realize it. But it, I mean, I imagine this isn't the first time that staff and the applicant have talked to each other. So for them to add that condition in there, there's obviously been a concern about the signage on the property. Mr. Schmidt was bringing up signage that's not even, um, present in this photograph. And I'm only just looking at the windows, and they're oh, well over the 25% that the city feels comfortable with. And I'll add that with the 25%, a lot of that's for public safety. I mean, would you want a, a police officer to walk into a place that he can't see what's going on? I mean, that's a dangerous situation to have, and I, I wouldn't be supportive of that. So I, I'm not saying we should deny him, but I'm saying I think that there should be a little bit more of a track record of proving his, um, proving their ability to follow the rules. So I don't want to deny it, but I'm definitely not going to support approving it tonight.
There's also the issue of the entertainment license. What we learned tonight, it's renewal every year.
Three years violation.
There's three years of violations.
I think the window issue or the signage issue, those are code enforcement issue. On here, if the applicant, also one of the, um, member of public, just regarding the LED light, I don't see that on, on any picture we're showing. If that, that case still a code enforcement issue. I, I, in my opinion, the application have tried very hard to able to improve the business activity. And also, the staff been working with the application, and staff is recommending to approve on the CUP. For that, I support staff opinion as recommendation as well, the, um, you know, the application.
Would you like to comment?
No, I, we're willing to resolve any issue that you may have. The windows can be resolved in one day, the, the permits we can come to come in, they care. We have no problem complying with any, any of the recommendations that, or conditions that are set in the permit. That's, that's not an issue at all. I mean, you know, if there's one wall there, we, um, if it's not very, not very well, we'll be happy to comply, so.
Okay.
Good evening. We had something like this not too long ago. We were happy you have your business here in the city. But coming, when you're asking for something, coming in promising you're going to fix things that look like they should have been done when you first got the business, and they haven't. But now because you want this license to be approved, now you are saying, no problem, you can fix them. So in being partial, when you're a business owner, in good faith, you always want to just do what you're asked of, to be a good neighbor. That's all we're saying. So perhaps today might not be that, you, mine will be a no. But because I see that this is not something that just happened, it's something that's been happening. So I need to see a better track record to be responsible for another liquor license. That's all.
Just for the record, I was not aware that, uh, a permit was not pulled for that, because while, when we got the building, that was already, a wall was missing, we weren't aware that, this, this is the first I've heard of it. And if there's a permit, if there's no permit that was pulled, everything else we do pull permits for, and we use licensed contractors. Matter of fact, the owner of the building requires us to only use licensed contractors and to only pull permits whenever we do any modification. So this is something that just.
And I, I understand, and with all due respect, I think you, you listened to the prior project as well, where sometimes you don't know something, but you're in a situation where one should know.
I understand, I'm 100% agree with you. We need to comply.
So it's a catch 22.
Yeah.
Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Mendoza has a question.
That's why I had asked if we approve it as condition, because, I mean, on exhibit A, it said that he should submit a plan sign program. I mean, they're already in the works for the signage issue, right?
Well, Commissioner, Commissioner Mendoza, the, the reason why.
Right, before, before they start serving the distilled spirits, is that correct? So it's already on here?
That, the reason why that condition, from what I understood of staff, the reason why that condition's on here is because it's an unresolved condition. The applicant knew about this. I, I don't own a liquor license, but I'll tell you right now, that's the holy grail. You, you follow that, because if you lose the liquor license, you lose a lot of money. And so you, most folks that own a liquor establishment are going to know what's in their conditions. And the fact that staff indicated to us that that condition is a holdover tells me that the, not only did they know about it, but they chose by virtue of this picture not to follow it. And we don't even have the picture that Mr. Schmidt talked about of flashing lights and banners on the top of the building, which kind of calls into question if the property owner was so adamant about you following the rules of the letter of the law, why are those signs up there? And why are there illegal walls inside the business that staff felt that they needed to condition you to, to submit ten improvements, where I've never seen that on another CUP? So I appreciate staff being so detailed, but it just calls into question how you guys are operating.
I, I'm not sure what that gentleman was talking about, about the other sign. Um, I don't know what he's talking about. This is recent sign, recent.
You submitted this photo, and this photo shows that you're out of compliance with signs.
Okay.
And you have a CUP currently, I mean, you, you know that you have one, right? That serves beer and wine.
Yes.
And in that conditional use permit, there is a condition that talks about sign program. So you, or someone before you, someone related to your business submitted a sign program to staff. Staff blessed it. You or your predecessor agreed to it, and now you're not following it. But now you're coming back to the planning commission and asking for a reward. I, I, to me, that just doesn't make sense, I'm sorry. And that's why I'll be, as well, with Commissioner Leo, Contreras Leo, not supporting it as well.
Any other comments? Discussion? Okay, with that, we'll take a vote. We have a, we have a motion and a second at this point in time. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nope.
So we have a three to two? Do we need to do a roll? Are we okay?
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we, um, we continue this item for six months. Let's see, when are we at, July? Maybe first meeting in January? And in that time, hopefully, the applicant will, um, comply with the proposed conditions in the resolution regarding the sign program and the tenant improvements to legally abide by what they agreed to in their previous CUP. Oh yes, and update the entertainment permit.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Second? Okay. Any comments on that? I just have one comment, and I guess my, my comment is only on the basis of time. I mean, you know, understand that these things have to be corrected, but is it really going to take six months to these, for these things to be corrected? Or if there's a sense of urgency in some respect, do we not look at maybe saying, hey, if this is done in three months? I mean, it's not, I'm not doing that to reward the situation, but I'm also looking at it from the standpoint of, is it, is it really a three-month task, or is it a two-month task, or a six-month task in order to get these things done?
No, I appreciate that. And I'd ask staff, what's the realistic timeline for, for compliance as far as ten improvements? Yeah, you know, doing the actual work on the wall? Because, and frankly, as far as, as the maker of the motion, I wouldn't feel comfortable having them come back until they've actually done the work to show that they're actually going to do it. Because they've already demonstrated in their operation that they don't follow through.
So are you amending your motion from six months to?
No, I'm waiting to see what staff's thoughts are.
We were debating over how long the plans are good once you go through plan check. He has not submitted plans yet. He, if the gentleman did, did submit, and he obviously has a lot of motivation to do so very quickly, if he submitted his plans quickly, he could get through, conceivably get through the process in about two months. So we could be looking at sometime mid-September, probably early October, in which he could have demonstrated compliance. That would be the earliest that he could look for that.
That's just plan approval, that's not counting actual construction. Because I believe the, the person who's seconded the motion agrees that we'd like to see the demonstrative, actual, you know, nails in the wall, in the correct place on the wall.
Well.
Approved place on the wall.
Yeah, that would depend on his contractor. But once they get through the plan check process, get, get their building permits, if it's in their best interest, they could probably do it in a couple of weeks. So October, sometime around that, would probably be a realistic time period.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and amend my motion then for the beginning of November.
Okay.
Would you support that?
We have an amended motion for the beginning of November, which is approximately three months.
Three and a half months, yeah.
Okay. And the second approves the amendment? Okay. Any other comments or statements? No? All right, having said that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All as opposed? Okay, thank you. All right. We're going to move on to item three. And this is a, this is an informational presentation. Item three, it's a review of the proposed state legislation, SB 35, the Weiner, um, bill on affordable housing streamlined approval process letter.
This item was billed incorrectly. I got real excited about it because I'm very concerned about this piece of legislation that's coming, um, through the Senate. It's moving very fast right now. And, um, I believe that it was, um, important for the city to take a stand on it. And in other cities that I, I have worked for, the planning commissions had the authority to do so. I pulled the, I pulled the trigger too fast. You don't have the authority to do separate, um, to do separate recommendations. The city is going to do a recommendation, make a recommendation opposing this piece of legislation. But I wanted to inform you about it so that you, as individual citizens or members of your neighborhood associations, could help inform people. And I will be sending out a memo to you, um, further describing the presentation that I'm making to you tonight. This piece of legislation is very, it's written by the same author as the second dwelling unit ordinance that was proposed last year. And it has the same sort of structure, um, in terms of it, but it applies to multifamily projects. So this, um, piece of legislation, again, the thought is, the overarching principle is that we should, um, we need, we are in a desperate housing situation in the state of California, and that we need more housing. So the premise is that we get more, um, affordable housing by taking away local, local control. And that's the overarching premise. The details of what would happen at, in Santa Ana, um, are pretty horrifying. It would, um, similar to the, similar to the second dwelling unit, it would eliminate, um, any kind of enforcement of parking requirements on any multifamily project in the city of Santa Ana. So what that means is even though we have a, uh, in our code, we say that you have to have a base number of units, and then additional, excuse me, a base number of spaces, two units, and then, um, additional units for, uh, visitors, and some additional units even in terms of bedrooms, excuse me, spaces. I'm saying spaces. But it's, I mean spaces, I'm saying units. It's saying because everything's so close to transit, nobody has to provide any parking. So that, that's a real serious concern for us. We're already, um, impacted by parking, parking issues are a big, big, um, issue for the city. The second thing is it would restrict or eliminate public participation in the, um, review process of new projects. So these things would not be coming to you as, um, these project, proposed projects would not come to you as a conditional use permit. You would not have the authority. We could apply design standards, but not design review. And then finally, um, there's a, a reporting procedure that we have to go through in terms of meeting our required housing units on an, um, on an annual basis. And right now, every year, we send a report into the state, and we say how far we've gotten in a meeting, in meeting our allocation for providing affordable housing. And so, and we say it by types of housing unit. There is low mod, um, uh, very low, very low, and very, very low. And we put out those numbers and say, you know, how we are, how we are moving forward in terms of achieving this eight-year goal of getting a range of different kinds of affordable housing constructed in our community that we've been assigned and we've accepted. And it's a realistic way, but we're not penalized, um, if we don't meet a por, portion of every single one of those categories every year. And, um, this legislation would do that. It would make us say one-eighth of our very, very low income, one-eighth of our. So if, if we did not, and, and that's not realistic, because housing projects come through, and you get a big low-income project, then the next year you get, um, then you get a project that has very low income. So it, it, it kind of fluctuates through, through the years. But at the end of the eight-year reporting period, you know, typically, we meet those goals. So, um, but what would happen if we didn't meet it every year, each year? We would not be able to analyze, um, projects under SEQA. So we would not be able to analyze projects for traffic impacts, air, noise, and other considerations. So not only would we, would we lose the discretionary authority, we would also lose SEQA authority. So based on these considerations, we're, we're recommending strongly, um, opposition to this bill. And it is going, I believe, I can't remember what the next step, through the next step, on the 12th. So that's Wednesday of this week, so. Uh, and this, the name of the legislation is SB 35, it's Weiner, and it's another affordable housing streamlined approval process.
Will you be sending a copy of that?
Yes, yes, we'll send. Um, we'll send you, um, I'll send you by email a copy of, um, the legislation.
Right.
The map that shows the few areas where we would be able to require parking. There are probably about, maybe a total of 10 acres in the whole city, 28 square miles. And, um, it will also outline those points that I've just, um, mentioned tonight, so. But that was, that was what I wanted to share with you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioner Becerra.
I, I appreciate you bringing this to us, and I don't, it's not a concern for us staff to weigh in on it. I, you know, that's what our city council's for. But as a planning commission, I appreciate when staff brings these, um, these bills before us, because they, they will impact us. And, you know, I'll opine for a second that it's just, there's a lot of folks up in San Francisco, even though Senator Weiner is in San Francisco. even though Senator Weiner is in San Francisco, that want to apply this one-size-fits-all to California, and they think that everybody should just have the same standards. And what's frustrating is, you know, and this is kind of a question I'm going to lead into with staff, you know, the granny flat, granny flat legislation that came out of Sacramento pretty much did the same thing. It handcuffed us as far as parking and certain other standards. So, it's, I'm curious and interested as to why planning staff is now opposed to Senator Weiner's legislation, but at the same time, I appreciate that at least with SB 35, you're opposed to it, because overall, the idea of trying to get us toward a more transit-oriented future, which is where we're going, whether anybody likes it or not, I appreciate it. But it's like, it's like taking a boat to Phoenix. It's probably not the right way to get there, the wrong vehicle to use. And I think whenever Sacramento is coming in with legislation that just applies a blanket provisions, I hope that Santa Ana will call to Sacramento's attention in their letter that maybe Sacramento should fine-tune their legislation to look at areas that are completely, you know, thumbing their nose at Sacramento and their goals. Because I think Santa Ana has a lot of density. I think Santa Ana makes a very good faith effort in trying to accommodate affordable housing. No jurisdiction's perfect, but it always feels like Santa Ana's getting beat up when we all know that within the other 33 cities in this county, there are plenty of others that don't do their fair share. And I wish the legislation that came out of Sacramento would actually reflect that. That's my two cents, thank you.
Any other comments?
No, the only other comment that I would have is that this is almost worse than that. This, I would say this is worse, because at least in, by the granny flat, excuse me, accessory dwelling unit ordinance, we had the opportunity to develop our own legislation and intend to do so. The state did give us that framework.
But the legislation, though, was, it's like basically saying you can move around in a two-by-two box. I mean, yay, I think I can move, but it's not much.
It's really tight, but there's a little bit of wiggle room, a very small amount of wiggle room. This, there's no wiggle room.
Right, now, this is just straight confinement, yes. I would agree.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a comment?
Yes.
I want to know, what is the SB 35 legislation, that our city must comply with it, or can we able to modify? Because different cities have different need, and, you know, in fact, our city that do, we need affordable housing. But again, I just read that SB 35 bill indicated that only require half a parking space per housing unit. I don't know what our current code is, but half a parking space per housing unit, that is very limited. And then if the tenant cannot able to find any parking space in their own project, their development, they, with the, they will part our surrounding area, neighborhood, and street, and commercial, and create more problem.
At this point, the legislation has not been adopted. I want to, you know, it's, but it is moving very fast through the legislature, so it's important for our community and other communities like us to make our voice heard, and make sure that our representatives and our state senator know that we feel strongly about it. That's, that's our stance now, but yes, it's.
What is the currently parking code for the development, any housing, like a multiple unit apartment complex and so on?
Pardon me?
What is the parking requirement for the multiple unit?
For multiple unit, it will depend on where the area is, but the base is two per unit, and typically, then there's a provision for guest parking. It's usually about 25%, but it can vary in different locations in the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this point? Okay, thank you, Kennedy. Moving on to comments, do you have any other comments from staff at this point?
No, we have no further comments.
Okay. Moving on, we'll look at commissioners' comments.
No comment.
I just have a question. What's the status with the, what do you call it, hiring of the new executive director? Do we know? Just curious.
Oh, there's an update. There is a, they're waiting for the next city manager. So, the interim city manager is holding these positions. She is looking for an interim executive director as well, so that will be nice.
Okay, thank you.
That will be nice.
Commissioner? No? Commissioner?
I just want to say one thing, and kind of going back to what we were talking about earlier, separate from the first item and what we were discussing as far as the site plan review, I just hope that staff will look at how we can have these folks that are coming through in the historic zones not slip by. And I don't mean to sound like I'm beating up staff, I just, there are good practices out there, and I know most of you've had experience in other jurisdictions. You know, the best one that I've seen, though far from perfect, has been the city of L.A.'s in the sense that they just, the properties are flagged, they don't go through until planning has looked at them. And given that Santa Ana has had the precedent of looking at proposals through the business license process, I just hope that, you know, planning staff will, you know, you guys are under the umbrella agency of planning and building, that you guys will work with your colleagues in the building division to, you know, figure out a way to, you know, whether it's minor, major, to me, or to Mr. Dickman or Ms. McEwen, doesn't matter. Just simply, let's try to nip this in the bud so that we don't have more items like this coming before us. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just from my own standpoint, a comment too, is that, you know, interestingly enough, if you look at the, if you look at the MLS that was put up for that particular property that we had, item number one, this evening, it said the house was in historic French Park. And what's, and I can say this from other standpoints, there's a lot of homes that are in West Floral Park, Fisher Park, and things like that, that are listed, when they get listed in the MLS, they're listed as, you know, historic floral park, because people want to associate with that. So, there's a lot of confusion that gets thrown out there in many respects, and I understand that, but I think we still do have to do something better to help, number one, preserve what we're trying to preserve, which is a lot of the historic aspects of this city, which frankly speaking, brings a lot of people from outside this city to our city, because they want to view and see what, you know, we have as far as historic goes, and we have a lot more to offer than a lot of the surrounding areas here in Orange County, even to some degree, L.A. So, I mean, I think we have an opportunity here, we just have to make sure that we do it right. There's two areas, do we have any idea, I just saw recently, the ITT property is being demoed, and there's a project going in, but do we have any idea what's going on from that standpoint? Is that Ally? Everybody was pointing to you, Ally, from behind you, everybody was pointing at your head.
Occasionally, I work on a real project here.
There you go.
So, it's a proposal by Shea Commercial to construct up to 500,000 square feet of new warehouse and distribution and manufacturing, like Class A facilities.
Is it spec, or is it actually being built for people?
It's spec. They have several tenants lined up, but because they haven't signed leases or letters of interest, they can't disclose, or I can't disclose any specifics in public.
Okay. And then the other item that came up, and just people asked this question, but corner of Bristol and Memory Lane, which many, many years ago was a gas station and has been an empty lot for many, many years. And here comes Vince. I could, I could, I'm going to keep on asking questions and just see who's got.
We're revolving door tonight, I think Ally will be the next project, probably, or Melanie. That is in plan check for a spec building, commercial building, about 6,000 square feet.
Called McDonald's?
It was supposed to be a bank building, it's parked for banks.
Pardon?
Parked as a bank building.
It's going to be a bank building?
I think it came before us.
Probably about four years ago. Had a variance, setback variance.
Long time.
No drive-through. No drive-through. Building's pushed up towards the street, so it's a setback, you know, it's supposed to be a Chase Bank.
People have been talking about it being at McDonald's with a drive-through.
What's in plan check is a bank building, but there's rumors that it may not go through, may be pulled out of plan check, because they can't get a tenant in there.
Okay.
Yeah, drive-through's a lot, double the parking of a bank building, and plus, all the property needs up for a drive-through, it'd be, yeah, very difficult.
Thanks, Vince.
You're welcome.
I know. I know, it's a disappointment. Well, yeah.
You can tell your friend it's not coming.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a 7-Eleven going.
There is a 7-Eleven, which we did, which we did handle, so. Okay, that's all my questions, I have no more. I'm satisfied now that it's not McDonald's, but that's okay. With that said, the meeting is adjourned. The next meeting will be on July 24, 2017. Thank you for joining us.